Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Welcome everyone to the twice monthly meeting of the mayor and council of the city of Westminster. If you have an electronic device, please silence it for the duration of the meeting and a courtesy to others. We've got quite a bit on the agenda, so we'll get into it. First item is approval of the minutes from the meeting of March 12th, 2018.
Make a motion to approve the minutes, Mr. President.
Second, Ben.
Motion, second. Any amendments, corrections, deletions? Here are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Before we get into the public hearings, Bonnie, so you guys don't have to wait through the whole meeting, were you going to say something during citizen comments?
I would love to.
Well, so that's usually at the end, if you'd like to jump in now.
I would love to, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. Bonnie Michelle, from the Boys and Girls Club. Grand opening is Monday, April 9th, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Please, the entire community is invited, like to see the new club come in. And we do have a proposal in front of you, if you can help us in any way. And it's to better the technology, because our kids deserve that, to be successful. And it's to help with art, intercom systems, they're going to run a radio station and do all types of things with technology. And we're going to be building robotics, STEM program, that we're really have them infused in right now, which is awesome, as you know. And we're going from 100 to 600 children in this new facility, and keeping teens and young people off the street evenings, weekends, special events. And we just really want to thank everyone already for this entire community that has come together to make this happen. It's not just one person, it's the whole community. And we're hoping with the proposal that we presented to you for the 43,000, that you might be able to help us with that, because it's very important to us, for this new club at this point. And I also, Greg Collard, who is one of our major sponsors, would like to speak a little bit.
So I'd, first of all, I'd like to thank you for your previous support for the Boys and Girls Club and the South Turn Street. So Greg Collard and President Collard Foundation, we're a local foundation headquartered in Carroll County, and we provide grants to a number of nonprofits and organizations, one of which of our main areas is youth programs. And so we make about two dozen grants a year to youth programs. We've been doing that for Boys and Girls Club for several years. We've given to the Y of Central Maryland, Ben Carson Scholars Fund, Outward Bound, Children's Cancer Fund, Make-A-Wish, Toys for Tots, to name a few, and all very good, excellent organizations. But we have a special promise for the Boys and Girls Club. And in fact, we've made our largest grant ever in the area of youth programs to the Boys and Girls Club. And because it is such a special place, the staff and the people there are incredible and the support they provide for the children. The programs are great, they keep the kids off the streets, they have a safe place to stay, it helps them avoid the opioid and drug issues that's going through the area. So again, I just can't say enough about the Boys and Girls Club and the fact that they're going to be currently helping 110 kids and can help as much as 500 to 600 children. And this proposal I had before this grant, this $43,000 technology grant, this will play such an important role in the club. Technology is so, such an important part of all our lives, and especially with education. And we're big proponents of good education, getting a good education, maybe going on to college, getting a good job and being successful and being good citizens for the community. And that's what this grant will help in so many ways with all these new children. So just kind of in summary, again, this is a great organization that's doing great work in the community. I think they're one of the best of the best. And this grant will enable literally hundreds of children to benefit from this technology, the children, their families, and it will just make a significant impact in the community that we live in. So, thank you.
And you've all been supportive since day one, and we appreciate everything everyone has done for us to be able to make this happen. And I think we're going to bring great vitality to the apartment main street again, when you have 600 children and their parents, all the businesses, everything that we can bring. But they deserve the best in technology to learn the best that they can. And a lot of our kids don't have computers at home and don't know how to navigate on a computer. And not so much is online, whether it's applications, essays, things like that, they don't know how to navigate, things like that. So we think it's very important for them to have the best. We appreciate so much you letting us speak tonight.
All right, thank you. Any questions from council? All right, thank you guys.
I just want to say that I was actually, I was in the facility, I guess a week or two ago, and I took the same tour there that I took from Bonnie, except when with Bonnie, nothing was done yet.
Yep.
And it was 98 degrees in the basement where she decided to tell us everything. And it's a beautiful place, it was exciting to see, and I think if you've been into their current location and then you go check out the new location, you can just see how it's going to be affected.
Thank you so much. Just to, sorry, Mr., just to follow up on Bonnie's comment about, everything is online today. You're absolutely correct that, you know, job applications, college applications, every high school application, everything is accessed online. So having access to that is true.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. You don't have to hang around for the rest of the meeting.
Well, thank you so much.
All right, our first public hearing is on ordinance number 890, amending the Westminster City Code, Chapter 124 Sewers and Sewage, Article 5, allocations and extensions, Section 124-22 allocation plan to delete subsection B exempting certain development from the city's sewer allocation policy, and amending Chapter 160 Water, Article 1 Potable Water to delete subsection B exempting certain development from the city's water allocation policy, and subsection E restricting sewer allocation in all cases when a water allocation is unavailable for the purpose of implementation of revisions to the city's water and sewer application. Before we turn it over to you, Mr. Mackey, we've been, this is one of several pieces of legislation that are the result of a very long, arduous process that was led by two committees, the Economic Development Committee and the Public Works Committee. And Mr. Peccararo led the Economic Development Committee, and I just want to give him an opportunity to make some comments about the process and then turn it over to you, Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I said, the mayor and the, I can't remember if the committee or development committee have been working with the staff for several months now, ever since we adopted the temporary restrictions on permits due to the large situation. And now that we've reached the point where we, where the Gazelle well is coming online, it's appropriate for us to be bringing this policy and some associated legislation to the larger body to, for approval. I would just want to, at the outset, commend the staff, particularly Mr. Mackey, for a tremendous job in pulling all this work together and making sure that we've covered a tremendous amount of ground in terms of, we have a variety of policies to be put in place. Mr. President, as you know, and I think our colleagues know, the committee and the mayor met with the public on two occasions in the last few meets and two public meetings to make sure that the business community had a very clear idea of what was happening with this process. And our three goals for that were to make sure that there was clarity and transparency and predictability around this process and what's going to be happening going forward. And that was, that was important to all of us as we laid this out, we want to make sure that everybody understands the situation with the city. And we do have significant challenges in terms of the city's water supply going forward. We are restricted by a consent order, with the consent agreement with the Maryland Department of the Environment, so, you know, we are not unilateral actors in this process. We have to work with both the state and the county to be able to put any of these policies or plans into effect. And we've been working with these partners diligently, you know, over a period of many years to try and bring these things about. And I believe that with the work that the staff has done and working with, you know, with our colleagues, we're at a point where we can lay out a policy that's going to be able to give everybody some understanding of how we're going to move forward over a sort of a short-term horizon of, you know, about seven years at a time, to make sure that everybody understands, you know, what the city will be able to do in the kind of water resources and wastewater capacity that we'll be able to put out there for additional future development in the city. With that, Mr. Mackey?
Well, so the mayor actually is going to run this because it's a public hearing. Yeah. So, Mr. Mayor, the gavel is yours.
Public hearing for ordinance 890 will begin, we won't repeat that again for everybody. Mr. Mackey?
Before we begin, just I can treat lightly on the ordinance. I think there was a series of presentations, the briefings, don't know if you all would like to have those presentations walk through that sort of overarching viewpoint for the evening, if that's anything you care for.
I think we should.
Okay. Someone can queue up the presentation, that'd be helpful. While that's happening, I do want to say thank you, Mayor Dominic and Economic Development Chair Peccararo, President WAC, and council members. This has been quite a long process, and your involvement in setting policy and shaping this has been key, and really a pleasure to work with you all, so. Tonight, I'll be walking through an overview of the Economic Development Committee's water and sewer allocation policy and the context for that policy. Perhaps quite slowly. There we go. We will, we will look at three aspects of the proposed policy and its setting. To begin with, we'll take a look at two new studies, both completed in 2018, that show the current capacity of the water and wastewater systems. Next, we'll take a look at how water allocations are granted and what the city's annual limits will be, based on the capacity in the two studies. Finally, we'll look at the latest refocusing of the city's priorities. The committee was especially concerned with providing needed allocations for current projects, then focusing the remaining resources to spur continued economic development. So where are we now? Regarding water capacity, the city is actively seeking new sources, working to expand existing sources, and investigating innovative approaches. The latest new source is Gazelle well Phase 1. As part of approving that project, the Maryland Department of the Environment asked the city to add filters for safety and purity. The process is now complete, and Phase 1 was just issued a certificate of potability allowing 165,000 gallons per day of new water. Work on Phase 2 is already underway, which will yield additional new water within the next few years. Regarding wastewater capacity, the city has also studied its treatment plant to determine its current load and the remaining capacity. Based on current data, the plant has 300,000 gallons per day of available capacity. In the near term, this figure represents how much capacity there will be to allocate. The city's continued investment in reducing inflow and infiltration into the sewer system should free up additional capacity, and I know we'll be talking about that in the budget overview a little later. Documentation of those efforts and the submission of a report to the Maryland Department of the Environment will be required. And also, while the enhanced nutrient removal project will not add physical capacity to the existing plant, it's possible that the city's authorized capacity could be increased through rerating the existing plant. That enhanced nutrient removal project will take a minimum of three years to complete, and rerating could occur after E and R completion. Finally, in the long term, the city is looking to add another 1.5 million gallons per day of capacity for a total of 6.5 million gallons per day. Regarding the system of allocations, the Maryland Department of the Environment and the city are both involved in tracking and granting allocations for new water. MDE's tracking system deducts the amount of water for a specific project at either the plat stage or the permit stage from the total amount of all available water. Sometimes we talk about this as the big silo. The city and the health department work together to estimate as closely as possible actual demand by using a variety of methods depending on the information on hand. Currently, the total of all water available is 174,000 gallons per day. That's the 165,000 gallons per day from the Gazelle well Phase 1, plus a small balance currently on hand. On the other side of the tracking system for the city, the city uses an annual limit as its cap. However, the new allocation policy that's before you tonight also provides for a one-time allocation category. This is so that projects in progress can move forward. This one-time category will use about half of the new water. Projects in this category include recent annexations, building permits on hold, two already approved good cause waivers, and past allocations that were approved before 2012. What is not included are any pending applications from before 2012 that have not been approved, and applications for good cause waivers currently on hold. Deducting this one-time allocation category of 97,000 gallons per day leaves 77,000 gallons per day to be evenly divided over the next seven years. And that's the time horizon that Chair Peccararo talked about, that was selected by the mayor and the common council for this current policy. In crafting this new allocation policy, the mayor and the Economic Development Committee established a series of priorities for how that annual cap of 11,000 gallons per day would be provided. 70% of the annual cap is set aside for commercial and industrial projects, and 30% is set aside for residential projects, and that doesn't include emergency connections, they're a separate category and they're handled separately. So of the residential portion, 90% is for projects within the city, and 10% is for projects outside of the city. For in-city projects, the allocations will be pooled and available only for multifamily proposals, once every three years. The city's adopted comp plan emphasizes the need for new housing types to attract a young professional workforce, and this is part of how it's being implemented. I think we've mentioned in previous presentations, there are about 600 single-family homes in the pipeline today, some are already at delivery in Bolton Hill and Stonegate. These will be built out over the next decade. As a result of that, there will be only one additional single-family home approved per year inside of the city, and one single-family home approved outside of the city beyond those 600 single-family homes already in the pipeline. For new homes outside of the city, a good cause waiver is required. Since there are currently 10 applications for good cause waivers on file that represent 14 units, the queue is already past the 2024 timeframe for this policy. In some cases, there are sewer-only good cause waivers that could move forward, but in general, new good cause waivers will have to wait some time. In conclusion, the new allocation policy recognizes both constraints and opportunities over the next seven years. The city's latest studies show that there is capacity, but it's limited. That being said, the mayor and common council's public works committee is constantly in the process of looking for and securing new water resources and new water rights. That process is ongoing, and it includes our partners in Carroll County and the state of Maryland. As many of you are aware from recent design reviews, the city has been requesting that all new projects attempt to fit within the existing water envelope. The city plans to continue this practice, and therefore, we will be allocating only the minimum of new water required to complete a development project. Finally, for all new allocations moving forward, there is a concentrated focus on promoting economic development with new commercial and industrial projects, and also on providing multifamily residential, to ensure that the city's wider economic health and young workforce are supported. Thank you.
Mr. Mackey? Any questions for Mr. Mackey from the council? I'm going to open it up to citizen comments, we do not have anyone listed that would ask questions or comments at this time. If you have any, please stand up, spell your name, and state your address. You want to hear that?
Yes, I'll try.
All right.
Dan Staley, S.T.A.L.E.Y., 52 Winter Street. I'm not convinced that this ordinance is ready to be adopted, and I've already known about it for two weeks, and of course, some of the data that I want, that I've asked for, I didn't get until just today. And the data that I have is not really current data. I'm just going to throw some facts out of, it comes out of your, out of the city's report. Currently, you guys, the city pumps 2.5 million gallons a day. You sell 2 million gallons a day, so 20% of what you're pumping is not being recovered. I suspect that's been your fires, leaks, and other sources. The, according to your data, the city's capacity is able to pump 3.2 million gallons a day. And then the allocation, which I suspect comes from MDE, is 3.5 million gallons a day. And then, the one thing that kind of concerns me is your wastewater treatment, you're pumping 2.5 million gallons a day in potable water, but you're treating 4.85. That seems to be quite disparaging to me from what we're putting into the system and what we're treating, so I mean, that shows a sign of a serious problem to me. The other thing is, MDE makes you, requires you to have a safety factor of 1.3 in your water system. So if you go from the 2.5 you're pumping to the 3.3 that the system's capable pumping, that's the 1.3, that's 30% margin you need for emergencies, drought, things like that. But then on top of that, you have in reserve almost another million gallons between the Coons well and the Medford Quarry Pond you pump into town here for drought, emergency conditions. It seems like we're protecting ourselves twice as much as what we need to. And I, I mean, to adopt this ordinance and allow two houses a year in the city for seven years, I don't see how that promotes any kind of growth. And the other thing in your report here, and this report only goes to 2015, the commercial connections have been going down for the last three years. Like in 2015, your commercial connections dropped by 53 connections. In 2013, they dropped by 151, 2014 by 5, almost like 2015 by 2. So the average was 132 over the three years. And that doesn't show economical growth to me, it sounds like we're going down some black hole. So I'm not sure, I'm not convinced that what you're about to do is going to protect the health, safety, welfare of the city. Thank you.
Well, just to clear a few things up, I think I'd like to say, start with, to understand how this all works, the first thing you have to recognize is that we're under consent order by Maryland Department of the Environment. So, and those numbers are tied to what they say we can allocate. So it's not how much we're pumping, I mean, they use all those numbers, but we have to go off of what MDE allows us to allocate. So you mentioned Medford Quarry, you mentioned another sewer well. So, and yes, we have more water available than we're able to use, because they factor things in like a 100-year drought plan. We have to be able to provide water. If we oversubscribe water, or overallocate water, you run the restaurant into severe droughts to literally run out of water. It's no longer an allocation problem. Like in 2003, when we had to truck water up from Baltimore County or Baltimore City.
Medford Quarry.
Yeah, so Medford Quarry is there as a backup. We would love to use Medford Quarry. We're in the process of looking into seeing if there is more water available there than we know today, and if there is, you may allow us to use some of that. But right now, that's only a backup source. We have no say in whether or not we can pump water from Medford Quarry today. So there's a lot of things in there that sound like great ideas, and we've asked all those questions already. So I want you to know that everything that you looked into, we've already pursued, but we have to go off of what MDE says. This ordinance is not going to, this doesn't make us have less water. So we have a certain amount of water, there's nothing we can do today to change that that isn't already in place. We do have some things coming down the pipe to, you know, to give us more water, but until then, we have a certain amount of water and we have no say in making it a larger number. We can only manage it as carefully as possible, and that's what this ordinance is about. It's not about what water we, you know, we can, you know, we can use, it's having the water we can use and managing it correctly, and making sure we don't run out till we find new sources. So I think everyone up here shares your concern for economic growth, believe me, but we also have to follow the incentives, you know, that we're under, we're in the Department of the Environment.
Well, again, the data I just referenced, which is on your website, and I understand that you're controlled by MDE, what you can do or cannot do. Now, MDE, I understand MDE makes you use 235 gallons a day. By your own report, in 2015, the residential use, by your data, the residential units were only used 111 gallons per unit for that. And then, again, you had this, they make you have this safety factor of 30%, so you're pumping 2.5, and 30% more of that is the 3.3. So you've got 8.8 million gallons a day in just the operating capacity of the system. And then on top of that, you've got this other million gallons that you can pool from the Coons well and the Medford Quarry in emergency conditions. I understand you can only use that, and again, when you were hauling water into town, that's why the line is going, but it just, it just seems like it's a numbers game to me. And it seems like the resource is here, and if it's managed properly, and we try harder to cut out the I and I out of the treatment plant, to maybe promote better water conservation with all the residents, I just think there's more room for growth than what this ordinance is allowing for. And then the other thing I looked at is that the population in Westminster has almost been flat since 2010. So, you know, it seems like we're becoming this AIDS community, where young people are growing up because of one reason or another, they're going someplace else, and we're staying flat as far as population, and, you know, an AIDS community, not travel around to see other places in the country is just not the environment that I think that we want.
Well, I agree, that's a whole nother discussion, and I think that today, we're discussing what water we're allowed to allocate from MDE, and we're, the ordinance is set to help us manage that as best as we can. And as we get more water sources, we, there's going to be an annual review of the specifics of the ordinance. Are there any other comments, then? We will close public hearing on ordinance 890. Onto the next public hearing, ordinance 891, amending Chapter 164 zoning of the Westminster City Code, Article 24 and Article 25 to delete certain provisions related to water and sewer allocations in order to ensure consistency of the zoning ordinance with the city's water and sewer allocation policy. Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, sir. Like ordinance 890, ordinance 891 was developed as part of the package for the new water and sewer allocation policy you'll be considering later tonight. As part of that process, a variety of portions of the code were seen to be in need of updating. In this particular case, there's provisions for temporary water allocations and phasing that are proposed for deletions, and those will be addressed in the new allocation policy as opposed to the city code. The reason there were two ordinances was the first ordinance is one that does not require review by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and you can introduce it at one meeting and adopt it the next, as you're on schedule to do so. Both of these were advertised. In the case of ordinance 891, it alters portions of Chapter 164, and that requires the Planning and Zoning Commission to review it. We had a special meeting scheduled for March 21st, where indeed, they were going to do that, and create a report and recommendation to you, and then there was a lovely snowfall, and we were not able to meet. So we have a second date for the special meeting, it will occur tomorrow, and Planning and Zoning Commission are planning on making a recommendation and forwarding it to you. Since this is an advertised public hearing, and at that advertised public hearing, mayor and council receive the comments of Planning and Zoning Commission, we recommend and request that the public record remain open, and that the common councils move to continue this public hearing. at its next regularly scheduled meeting on April 9th at 7:00 PM in City Hall, so that those comments can be received at the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor? I'll go ahead and make a motion that we keep the public record open for 891, so that the Planning and Zoning Commission gives the recommendation, and then we'll hear it on the next scheduled council meeting.
I'll second that.
Call them in. That's our, we said, call them. Call them, call them, first call them.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, call it first? All right. Public hearing for ordinance 891 is closed.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're on to the next item in the agenda, a presentation about the 2019, proposed 2019 budget. Ms. Matthews?
Thank you. It's my pleasure as a senior to present the proposed budget for fiscal year 2019. The city's annual budget reflects the mayor and council's priorities in terms of service delivery to the community, and in my opinion, it's the most important action that you take every year. The budget being presented tonight represents countless hours of work on the part of the city staff, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of the department directors for their assistance, particularly our Director of Finance and Administrative Services, Tammy Palmer. I also want to thank members of the Finance Committee for their input and leadership in developing the budget. Mr. Matthews, you have more than I do.
There you go.
I think I need someone a little bit taller than that.
You want to send it down here, I'll click it for you? You want me to click it for you?
I got it, I can make them do it. Just wanted to take a few minutes to sort of touch on some of the principles that guided the development of the budget. Working in conjunction with the Finance Committee, the budget proposal was predicated on no change in the city's real property tax rate. That is accepted by the other members of the common council. Fiscal year 2019 will mark the sixth consecutive year that the city's tax, real property tax rate will remain at 56 cents for $100 of assessed valuation. Other guiding principles in developing the budget were a focus on the city's long-term financial health, specifically maintaining adequate financial reserves and addressing our infrastructure needs, as well as advancing the goals of the strategic plan that the mayor and council adopted in February of this year. Another guiding principle concerned the implementation of the compensation classification study results. In early fiscal year 2018, the city undertook an assessment of its salary and benefit structure referred to as a compensation and classification study. The recruitment and retention of quality staff is critical to the city's ability to provide a high level of service to the community. Consequently, a key priority going into the budget process was beginning the process of implementing the study results. Those results will be formally presented to the mayor and council at your meeting on April 19th, oh, sorry, April 9th. Funding constraints will require that the study results be phased in over several fiscal years. As will be old hat to mayor and council, but for those who are in the audience, the city's budget is once again structured in five funds for accounting entities. The general fund accounts for day-to-day operational activities of the city, which include police protection, snow removal, and general administrative activities. We have three enterprise funds, water, sewer, and fiber. Enterprise funds are designed to operate and be accounted for in a manner similar to private business. And lastly, we have a capital projects fund, which accounts for all of the city's capital expenditures that are not otherwise captured in one of the three enterprise funds. I have a quick overview of the budget. Total revenues are projected to be 69.57 million. Our total expenditures are just a little bit over 72 million. For those of you who can do simple math, obviously, those two numbers do not add up. The variance will come from our general fund reserve and our capital project fund reserve. These are monies that have accumulated over time, and it is appropriate to use those for one-time, non-recurring capital projects, which is what is proposed in the budget. Now, this graph shows the expenditures by fund. Once again, our total projected expenditures in fiscal year 2019 is just a little over 72 million dollars. Sewer fund expenditures, for those of you who are some distance away from the chart, it's the bottom of green section, will make up almost half of total expenditures next fiscal year. Those costs are largely driven by the E&amp;R project, which accounts for about 85% of all sewer fund expenditures next year. General fund expenditures represent another 22% of projected expenditures. Talk a little bit about staffing and personnel costs. The number of full-time equivalent positions will remain relatively flat next year, as they have been for the last few years. Family staffing change that is proposed in the next fiscal year is the addition of one full-time employee for fiber maintenance. In going through the budget process and in talking to the department directors, it was clear that additional staffing would be beneficial in a number of areas. However, there will not be sufficient financial capacity next year to fund those needs. The city has received its renewal rates for health insurance for next year, and our rates will increase by only 3.9%, which is good news. And as I stated earlier, a high priority in the development of the budget was beginning the process of implementing the results of the compensation classification study. Funding is included in the proposed budget, for across the board wage adjustment for all benefited city staff, as well as beginning, once again, that process of implementing the study results. Kind of turning briefly to the general fund, we are projecting revenues, just a little bit over 16 million dollars, and expenditures of roughly 15.8. There will be other financing sources that are used. We'll be making a transfer to the capital projects fund of about 2.8 million dollars. That is largely for the renovation of 45 West Main, which is the building we are getting ready to close on. And there will also be a transfer to the fiber fund of roughly $360,000. The primary revenue source of the general fund is real property tax revenues, as shown on this chart. Real property tax revenue comprises almost half of all fund revenues. The next largest revenue source for the city are intergovernmental revenues, and this source does include the payment that the city receives from Carroll County under the county-town agreement we're expecting to receive from the county, just a little over $1 million next year. Income taxes will account for 13% of projected operating revenues. And I would just note that this is a revenue source, no matter what city you work in in Maryland, it's particularly challenging. Also, counties have the same difficulty we do. And one of the reasons for that is that we are still getting payments after the fiscal year technically ends that are accrued back. And talking to Ms. Palmer about this revenue source, and based on the activity we have seen this year, we have recommended reducing what we expect to receive from income taxes next year. We have budgeted $2.1 million, based on our current receipts, FY19. The FY18 budget amount is 2.25 million, so we are expecting a little scaling back in income tax revenues. As far as property assessments and taxes, I think as opposed to you in the room know who own property in Westminster, all of your property was reassessed. And that will be, FY19 will be the first year that those reassessments go into effect. In accordance with Maryland law, any increased assessment is phased in over a three-year period. As I mentioned earlier, we are proposing that the tax rate remain the same. However, I would note that the constant yield tax rate is 0.5424 over $100 of assessed valuation compared to the proposed tax rate of 56 cents. What that basically means is if we leave the property tax rate the same, the city will be getting additional revenue even though the rate is unchanged, simply through higher property values. At the 56 cent rate, the city should see an increase of about $335,000 from real property tax revenues. And in accordance with state law, if you do not lower your property tax rate to the constant yield rate, we are required to have a public hearing. And that public hearing has been advertised and will take place at your next regularly scheduled meeting on April 9th. Turning to general fund expenditures, we have included funding in next year's budget for the, a survey of city residents using the National Citizen Survey. This probably sounds familiar to the mayor and council, as this project was actually budgeted in this fiscal year due to workload demands associated with things such as negotiating the contract for 45 West Main, working with the architect. It simply wasn't feasible to undertake that project this year. The budget also includes funding to purchase additional holiday decorations, so we have a more uniform appearance up and down Main Street during the holiday season. As mayor and council probably recall, one of your goals in the strategic plan was to begin the process of trying to promote alternative modes of transportation in the city. And we have a small amount of funding included in next year's budget for the purchase and installation of bike racks in the downtown area. Two other projects I'd just like to highlight in the proposed budget. The planning department budget includes funding for a consultant to assist the city in two areas. The first would be a market analysis to assist the city in better defining its market, including a sales and retail leakage analysis. This would basically be information that would help us focus our economic development efforts. Funding is also included for a branding initiative. This was one of your priority projects listed in the strategic plan. And the resulting city brand will provide a foundation for the city's marketing and economic development efforts. Turning to the water fund, revenues are projected at 6.35 million. As the mayor and council are aware, we recently approved a rate study both for water and sewer rates. That study is still in progress. Until such time as that study is completed, which we do expect, I believe, Ms. Palmer, to be yet this fiscal year before the budget is adopted, we have put a 5% rate increase as a placeholder in the budget. Expenditures are estimated to be just under $6 million. And I did want to note that we have $400,000 in the budget for completion of Phase 2 of the Gazelle Well. That project has already gotten underway. And once Phase 2 is online, it should yield 128,000 gallons per day of new allocatable water. Turning to the sewer fund, revenues are projected to be about $36.5 million. Pending the rate study, we have not proposed any change in sewer rates for the next fiscal year. Expenditures are projected to be $35.3 million. And as I mentioned, the largest component of that by far is the funding that the city will expend on the E&amp;R project next fiscal year. That will be a multi-year project, so when you have the opportunity to review the proposed capital improvement program, you'll see additional funding for the E&amp;R project in later years. To Mr. Staley's comment earlier this evening, $1 million is included in the proposed budget as part of the city's continuing effort to address inflow and infiltration into the sewer system. Minimizing I and I will restore sewer treatment capacity, which is critical to Westminster's continued economic growth. Fiber fund revenues are projected to be just over $8 million. The largest component of that are loan proceeds.
Why is there one more? Sorry, just jumping around, sorry.
So go one back. There we go. One more. There we go.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. The largest part of fiber fund revenues are the loan proceeds. We have taken out bonds to basically fund the capital construction of the network. Of that 8.18 million, 7.3 million is the drawdown of the loan proceeds to continue construction, particularly Phases 3 and 4, as well as an amount that is allocated for the purchase of drop installation. Team payments are projected to be just about $520,000. And as I mentioned earlier, the budget does contemplate a transfer from the general fund of about $360,000. In terms of fund expenditures, as I mentioned, the largest component will be continued construction of the network. Debt service will be about $550,000. Staffing costs that are charged to the fiber fund are about $100,000. And then we have miscellaneous expenses of about $140,000. One thing I would just note in talking about the fiber fund, with any time you put together a budget, it really is a matter of guesswork to some degree. You're trying to make the best assumptions that you can based on the data that you have. I would say there is a lot of uncertainty surrounding the fiber fund, which makes constructing a budget for the future much more difficult than other budgets that the city has. As I mentioned, we have ongoing construction. The bonds for the fiber fund are variable rate interest bonds, and we're trying to make some projections of what interest rates will be next fiscal year. And we certainly are unclear as to what subscriber rates will be, particularly for areas that are not yet constructed. Because of these unknown factors, I believe staff has taken an appropriate, but reasonably conservative approach in crafting the fiber fund budget for FY2019. We will be holding a number of work sessions as part of this budget process, and I would recommend that we set aside some time during one of those work sessions so that staff can sort of walk you through the assumptions that we used for the fiber fund budget, and you have an opportunity to weigh in and determine whether or not you're comfortable with those assumptions. Kind of just stepping back a little bit from fiscal year 19, projected loan proceeds in total for the fiber project stand about 16.1 million, is what we anticipated at this time. When the project was initially envisioned, we had expected to draw down about $21 million in loan proceeds. So certainly, that will be considerably less debt that the city will be carrying and paying on, which is certainly good news. At the end, one of the things I did want to call out for the mayor and council is that we are expecting that principal payments on the bonds will begin in January 2019. To date, the city has only paid interest on the fiber bonds, but construction is expected to be completed by the end of this calendar year, and principal payments will begin. As a reminder, as I just said, the bonds have a variable interest rate. Interest rates are starting to slowly inch up. For the purpose of developing the budget, Ms. Palmer and I have assumed an interest rate of 3.12%. And talking a little bit about fiber fund expenditures, as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, the only staffing change that is proposed for fiscal year 19 is the addition of one full-time employee for fiber maintenance. This will bring the total number of FTEs that is charged to the fiber fund to three. We did approve a placeholder position in the FY2018 budget for fiber maintenance. This was, as we talked about last year, a placeholder while we tried to determine as a city whether or not it was more cost-effective to use in-house staff for fiber maintenance, or we would be better contracting that out. That analysis has been concluded, and staff has concluded that the city's needs are best served by performing these functions with in-house staff. In addition to the two maintenance positions, a portion of the cost of the Death and Public Works Director is charged to the fiber fund, and a portion of the salary of one of our GIS tags is also allocated to the fiber fund, and that will bring it up to three. In fairness to Mr. Glass, who is not here this evening, I did want to note that it is unclear at this time whether two full-time employees will be sufficient for fiber maintenance. Mr. Glass had initially requested three positions. My feeling is that we kind of need to slowly get into this process and see what our needs actually are, rather than ramping up too fast and incurring those costs. I have committed to Mr. Glass that we will reevaluate staffing levels as the city gains more experience in fiber maintenance. And if we find that the workload requirements are such that we are understaffed, then I would bring that forward to you all. Also wanted to note that the budget proposal assumes a continued support to MAGIC in the amount of $80,000. This is a grant that may begin in fiscal year 2018. The last one I want to talk about this evening is the capital projects fund. Revenues are projected to be 2.89 million, expenditures 6.99 million. And other financing sources would include an allocation from the capital projects fund reserve. These are monies that may have accumulated over time. Projects either were deferred or came in less than we anticipated. And there will also be a general fund transfer of 2.82 million. In terms of revenues by mayor and council policy, a portion of the real property tax revenue that the city receives is earmarked for capital projects and accounted for in this fund. In FY2019, that share of real property tax revenue is 2.1 million dollars. Other fund revenues include highway user revenue and benefit assessments. As I mentioned, the shortfall between fund revenues and expenditures in FY2019 will be addressed by the use of capital projects fund reserve monies and a transfer from the general fund. One thing I did want to note is that $750,000 has been recommended to partially redeem the 2005 infrastructure bond. You may recall that we did the same thing in the FY2018 bond. This is one of our higher rated, higher interest rate bonds. Was used, I believe, Ms. Palmer, for the Green Street Bridge.
Correct.
And it's been part of our effort when we have excess money that we can just use for one-time projects to try to pay down our debt and reduce the city's ongoing operational expenses. The transfer from the general fund will also be used primarily for the renovation of 45 West Main. Switching to other capital projects, in this fiscal year, as mayor and council are aware, we took out a $5 million bond issue to try to make some headway on our road maintenance, which has fallen severely behind. We want to continue to try to invest in our roads. So it's recommended that we spend $1.5 million for street paving in the next fiscal year. Other capital projects that are for Other capital projects that are proposed include retaining wall repairs and the purchase of new vehicles and equipment in accordance with our customer replacement schedule. And as I mentioned, we'll be undertaking renovations until we touch West Main. One thing I did want to note for the mayor and council is there has been no funding other than routine maintenance included in the budget for Wakefield Valley. I know one of your strategic planning goals is having a broader policy discussion about what you want to do with that property. But I did just want to call out for you that no funding has been included for any major improvements to Wakefield Valley in the next fiscal year. Next steps in the budget process and where we go from tonight's discussion on April 9th. You have a, we'll have a series of items on your meeting agenda related to the budget. As I indicated, there'll be a public hearing that is required by state law called the Constant Yield Tax Rate Hearing. We have also advertised for the first of two public hearings you will hold just on the budget in general to get feedback from the community. We will also have our first budget work session on this date. And on April 9th, Nancy Berkeley, here in the mayor and council, had an opportunity to meet. She is our primary consultant with Evergreen Solutions, who undertook the compensation classification study for the city, will be here to formally present those study results to you. On April 12th, staff will be reviewing the proposed capital improvement program with planning and learning commission. On April 23rd, I think, actually, Ms. Palmer, you wanted to introduce the budget ordinance on April 9th?
Correct.
So that will actually be moved to April 9th. The second budget public hearing will take place on April 23rd. And if the mayor and council feel that you need one, we have to go a lot of time for a second work session on the proposed budget. And then finally, on May 14th, you are scheduled to adopt the FY 2019 budget. Would I conclude my presentation? At your places at the latest this evening, I've provided you with a copy of the budget transmittal message, the proposed capital improvement program, as well as project descriptions for the projects that are proposed for funding in FY 2019. We will be posting this information on the city's website, so the community has an opportunity to review it in advance of the public hearing intermece.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Any questions from council spoken, Ms. Matthews?
Mr. President, so I have a bunch, but I think I'm going to save them predominantly for work sessions. But one thing I do want to talk about briefly is the ninth, I mean, we're talking about the comp and class study, a work session, we've got a hearing, and then whatever other business that we're going to be discussing. I think we need to consider moving our start time up for that meeting if possible, because that's going to be, it's going to be a long meeting.
I believe the public hearing has already been advertised for seven o'clock, but you can certainly start items that are not subject to a public hearing.
Right. I think, I think we ought to think about that, because otherwise we could be here all night, maybe bumping up an hour, at least I would suggest, and we can just have the hearing start seven or later.
Mr. President.
Mr. Peccero.
To Mr. Kabachi's point, something else to think about is in the past, we've had a special meeting that we've devoted to budget conversation, which is another possibility if people have the time to do that. There might be a lot to do. I think Mr. Kabachi has a good point. Might be a lot to do to take on all the regular business we have to do, which will include wrapping up the water policy discussions along with the beginning of the conversation.
So Ms. Matthews and I will confer and look at the schedule and see if there's which is the better solution, and which is the least bad solution, put it that way. Because there's a lot of work to be done. Whether we have a long meeting or two, an extra meeting, you know, we'll see.
Mr. President, one other quick comment I wanted to make also, if I could. Well, you know, I guess we are going to have a second work session if we need it. Because I, I want to understand what the comp and class study is going to tell us before we go too far with our budget discussions. But I think we'll have time to do that. Okay.
All right. Before we move on to the consent counter, so we jump, the boys and girls, up to the front of the meeting. So you guys are well, more than welcome to attend and hear all these other fascinating things that we're going to be discussing, but if you want to jump out, that wouldn't hurt our feelings.
Bonnie spoke and so did Greg.
Greg.
Calhoun. Is that for her?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Peccero.
If you're excusing him, Mr. Tellis.
I'm not excusing him, I'm giving him an opportunity.
Before you do that, I think we should note that today's his birthday.
Oh. Happy birthday.
I don't know the most objective decision, but I think we do want to wish him a happy birthday.
Are we going to sing?
Officially.
Not necessary.
We're on TV.
I've heard you sing before.
All right. So onto the consent counter. Ms. Matthews, you have one amendment you want to make before we approve the consent counter?
Thank you, President Weck. Item C on your consent calendar, concerns in a 60-day extension of the city's lease for the city's administrative offices, and included in your agenda packet was a reference to the other party being ATAPCO. There are a number of corporate entities that are associated with the ownership and leasing of the building, so I just wanted to make the correction that the agreement that the city will be entering into will be with Winchester West LLC, which is wholly owned by the Roswell LLC. Just a technical correction.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. So we have four items on the consent counter. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent counter.
Motion to put the consent counter.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further questions of staff about any of the items on the consent counter? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Reports from the mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just want to take a moment to thank everybody, all the city staff that kept roads clear and kept everyone safe over the holidays and special events, all the first responders, some of them are here today, and our fire department. I saw there was extra activity due to the weather. Just want to take a moment to thank everyone. And then, just say that I'm excited for what is about to be a very busy event season, lots of scrolls and things planned, and that will be it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Peccero.
Not in time, Mr. President.
Dr. Peccero.
Just to follow up the mayor on the, on this busy spring coming up, from the Arts Council, the Peep Show does begin on Thursday, which always increases traffic quite a bit on Main Street for cars and pedestrians.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kabachi.
Shockingly, nothing this evening, Mr. President.
All right. I have two things. One, I just want to thank the department heads, Ms. Palmer and Ms. Matthews, for all the hard work on the budget. This, so far, this has been an enormous amount of work because of the comp and class study. It's complicated things. We also have some larger things that are maturing, like the fiber project, we have the E and R project. So there are these massive moving parts that are complicating the budget process. And even with that, we are ahead of schedule in a way, that we rarely have been this far along this early. And I think that's a testament to Ms. Matthews' leadership in the organization, that despite the larger challenge this has made, she's moved the ball considerably, and this is great work. Thank you. And then the second thing is, coincidentally, today in Technically Magazine, which is based out of Baltimore, the Westminster Fiber Project was mentioned very favorably in the context of the city of Baltimore is just starting the process of considering to do a study, something we did back in 2012. So they are six, at least six years behind us in looking at this, but there seems to be a growing consensus that that's something they want to do. And I'm sure they'll be calling us at some point, looking for advice.
Trade them some water, Mr. President, for advice.
Yeah, that's a good thought. All right. Any council comments and discussion, any issues? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. The first is introduction of ordinance 892 amending the adopted budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th. Ms. Palmer.
Yes, this is an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2018 budget, not to be confused with the 2019 budget that you just heard about. This is the current budget that we're in, and this is to revise the budget to accommodate certain revenues or expenditures that were not expected. Would you like me to go through them one by one?
Not unless, I mean, this, so this is a housekeeping exercise to clean things up in preparation for the closing of the year. All the details are in the report. Does anybody have any specific questions about any of the details? No, no need. Thank you, Ms. Palmer. Anything else?
I'd recommend that you introduce the order.
Outstanding.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance 892.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next item is adoption of ordinance number 890 amending Westminster City Code, Chapter 124 Sewers and Sewage, Article 5, allocations and extensions, Section 124-22, allocation plan to delete subsection B, exempting certain development from the city's sewer allocation policy, and amending Chapter 160 Water, Article 1, Poto Water, to delete subsection B, exempting certain development from the city's water allocation policy, and subsection E, restricting sewer allocation in all cases when a water allocation is unavailable for the purpose of implementation or revisions to the city's water and sewer allocation policy as previously discussed. Mr. Mackey, anything to add?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 890.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Peccero, if you were first there. Any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And then the last is adoption of resolution number 18-04 of the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster, adopting revised water and sewer allocation, revised water and wastewater allocation policy, and superseding all prior such policies, including but not limited to the water and wastewater allocation policy set forth in resolution R-15-1. Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the sort of star of the show. Resolution 1804 would propose to adopt a new water and sewer allocation policy. We've talked about many of the parts. Presentation earlier this evening gave an overview. I think the much anticipated distribution chart is now available on the counter for those who may be interested and have not seen it yet. Essentially, the policy sets forth categories and areas for allocations to be given. It creates a master distribution chart, which is the sort of the focus of all of the math. The chart is before you. If you look at it briefly, on the left side, there's a blue column, that's water allocations. On the right side, there's a green column, that's sewer allocations. I think the, the big pieces are across the top, there's a little history piece that gives sort of an overview of water allocations in from 2015, 2016, and 2017, which are the two and a half years, because 2015 was a partial, that water has been available to allocate up to this point. The chart does two, makes two big moves. It sets forward one-time allocations that we discussed, which is roughly half the water for projects in progress that mayor and committee and council members have all expressed. They want to make sure that things that are in process may move forward. And then it sets forth the seven years of allocations at 11,000 gallons per day per year. I think the thing that is functionally important is, if you notice the yellow line, which is termed initial maxims, these are the numbers that you are adopting as part of policy. And so staff can make changes and fill in the sections that are not colored yellow, because we're adding allocations as they are recorded. This is the ledger that people can ask a copy of and see how we're doing. But the yellow lines that are called initial maxims are the, are the caps that you set for each category for all seven years. This chart may return to you for changes as needed. It is planned to return to you on a regular basis at least once a year. And this implements the policy in whole and makes everything out, so staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. This is the, as Mr. Mackey said, the culmination of all of this work, and it is, in a way, unprecedented. We've never had this level of detail and clarity and transparency in our water allocation process. And Mr. Mackey deserves the lion's share and the credit for this. He did an extraordinary amount of work and I think has achieved a really brilliant outcome here. This is fantastic. It's not fantastic in terms of the impact, because we know people are unhappy about the fact that this is basically rationing, but it's just the reality. We've been living with this reality for many years now, and now at least the community has some clarity about how this is going to look for years now, and people can make plans, or not, based on the availability of water. But at least now, everybody knows what it looks like and how things will work for the next seven years. Mr. President.
Mr. Kabachi. So a couple of things. Number one, I concur. Mr. Mackey, wonderful job. I know you put a lot of effort in this. It was very impressive, and I had my briefing from you a week or so ago. But, you know, Mr. President, I'd be remiss if I didn't comment that this is something that you have been pushing for, for three or four years at this point. I recall three-plus years ago, you talking about the need for us to have clarity for the builders and developers and people who want to, want to grow business within the community as to what we can allocate, and we had to get it on a schedule. So you deserve some of the credit for this as well, because this, in a big part, was your vision to make this happen, so. A couple of comments. One of the things I don't want to overlook is, we are allocating 600 new homes as part of this policy. So while it does sound like there's not a lot over the next seven years, we're allocating 600 new homes. That's in addition to the developments that have already taken place over the past few years in the city. So while on the surface, I think it looks like it's very limited in the amount of residential that we're contemplating, that's partially because we've done a tremendous amount of residential, leading up to this, and will be included in that one-time allocation. The other thing that I wanted to comment on, and I want to make sure I'm clear on this before we adopt it, the impetus of the 70/30 split of the yearly allocation that we're going to allow, I think was that we want to give priority first to commercial and then residential second. And I think we all know why that is, not the least of which is, we have 600 new homes that we are allowing for in this, but also, we're trying to grow that business base, because that's good for taxes. You know, traditionally, businesses use less resources than residential development, yet contribute equal or more to the tax base than what residential units do. And all of us, or most of us in this room, certainly all of us on the council and the mayor, pay taxes, and we don't want to pay more if we can avoid it, and that hopefully will help with that. However, if we do not have a request for that 70%, we can then move water from that bucket into the residential bucket if there is water available in that given year that's not used by commercial, correct?
Yes, sir.
So we're not limiting it necessarily if the commercial demand isn't there.
We're prioritizing.
We're prioritizing it. I just want to make sure that that's, that I'm clear on that.
Mr. President.
I guess, Mr. Peccero.
I would note that our goal is to not use that water for additional residential development, and rather, you know, we very much want to see additional industrial, commercial activity. And this is, this is, while the council certainly has the ability to make any kinds of changes at once in the coming out years, our goal is to reserve that water for that purpose. So unless it were overwhelmingly positive choice, you know, to allow some certain new residential development, like for example, if we were to get some kind of, you know, multifamily, you know, opportunity.
Make you send for something.
That would be one thing, but, you know, the goal is to make sure that that water remains reserved for the kind of development we want to see take place in the city.
Well, and a perfect example is, you know, our recent experience out at the airport with a company wanting to move to the airport, and we had to do some scrambling and all sorts of finagling, working with our good friends and partners at the county to make that happen. And we don't want to put ourselves in the situation in the future of always having to run around in a panic every time a new opportunity drops in our lap. We need to be ready for it.
Right. I also want to point out, if I can continue, when we talk about these additional 600 new homes that are being built out, which is part of the one-time allocations that will be taking place in the first year, essentially, most of the residentially zoned land within the city will then be accounted for. There are no more significant tracts of land within the city limits to be developed for residential use. There are some, some small lots here and there where, you know, some things could happen. But, but we kind of, you know, the kind of, you know, additional residential development within the city that might possibly take place would have to be some kind of multifamily development. that might possibly take place would have to be some kind of multifamily development because there really isn't a land for it.
Thank you, Councilor Peccaro.
I would just like to sort of follow up and, you know, sort of make the point that even though this is an allocation, this is really sort of the beginning of where we start with this policy, as it will come back to the council every year, and we have the opportunity to revisit that. And also, you know, as we move towards hopefully more reuse and recycling in the future, we'll look at an increase of water for the city of Westminster for economic and residential.
So that's a great point, Dr. Becker, and I think that's the way to look at this, is it's part of the budget process now. We now have a water budget, and we have to balance revenues and expenses and...
And just because we have a water budget doesn't mean that we're halting the search for new sources of water for the city.
Right.
Well, Mr. President, I have one other thing that I missed. I want to echo what the mayor had said earlier. We are limited. It doesn't matter how many gallons, though you brought up 111 gallons, are being used. We don't get the control of that. It's 235 by MDE whether we're using it or not. So unfortunately, we don't get to play with those numbers. As much as it would be nice if it was based on what our actual usage was, because frankly, we'd probably have more water, we don't get that choice. And we have a lot less latitude when it comes to some of these decisions than I think we'd probably like, but there's probably good reason for it, too. There's much smarter people like Dr. Becker that understand this more than I do. But I did want to echo what the mayor said. He's absolutely right. That's it, Mr. President.
Any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I don't think we ever...
No.
Do we get a motion in a second?
We never made a motion.
All right, how about that? Let's have a motion in a second.
We have all over the place tonight.
No. No, we didn't. No.
Okay.
What number is it?
1804, Resolution 1804.
Mr. President?
Yes.
On with the adoption of Resolution 1804.
All right. Motion and second. Any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have no unfinished business, no new business, and now we are on to departmental reports. Ms. Matthews.
We'll start with Ms. Allen Sealy. Good evening. I have good news to report, that we hired a health inspector and he started back Tuesday, and he's well underway and comes with a lot of experience and looks to be like he's doing a good job already. Real happy so far.
Great news.
Ms. River.
Yes, good evening. Despite a city park covered in snow, we still prevailed and had our egg hunt on Saturday thanks to the Streets Department, who, after clearing the entire city, I called them and said, "Could you please, please, please clear the parking garage top two decks?" And they did. Typically, that is not maintained during snow events. So they cleared the parking deck for us and salted and cleared some more and scraped the ice that formed between Friday night and Saturday morning. And we had our egg hunt. We saw about 5,000 people out for the day for that event. We stuffed 30,000 eggs. So it's, and it only takes five minutes, so it's the best special event ever. We do have other activities that happen, which we were able to move inside the gymnasium, crafts games, and we have a bunny petting zoo that the 4-H Rabbit and KV Club provides for us. So all in all, despite the challenges, it was a great family day in the city of Westminster. And now we are fully focused on the wine stroll that is coming very, very soon. So we continue to see ticket sales soar and the interest on our Facebook page soar as well. And we are doing our best to make sure that all of the tent poles are set squarely for a successful event. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Ms. Palmer.
I would just like to expand a little bit on that conversation about the rate study that Ms. Matthews talked about a little bit in the 2019 budget. We were asked to provide a certain amount of data, which is common with these types of studies. We required a pretty in-depth study this time. We asked them to take a look at everything that the city had, and so our laundry list was pretty long. And I'm happy to report that our team got all of that information to their group within four days. So they've had that information for about a week and a half now. At our kickoff meeting, they thought that they would be able to give us some idea of where we stood so that we would be able to work in their recommendations for this budget year. So as Ms. Matthews reported, we worked in a 5% increase in the water fund only. The reason for that mostly is because we, as we have been developing the Giselle well and working on Heights Park or Heights Quarry and some of those other new sources, we've exhausted our benefit assessment fund in the water fund. And so I would expect that their study is going to suggest that we are going to need to increase rates because our new development is not keeping up with our improvements to our system or our exploration for new water. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of background there and what to expect coming up in the next few work sessions for the budget and how it relates to that study with at least water. That's all I have.
Mr. Mackey, I think we know how you've been spending your time. Is there anything else you'd like to share?
Thank you very much. Just a few things. Tomorrow night, amongst the other things the Planning and Zoning Commission is considering at their special meeting, they will also be looking at a proposed water and sewer chapter for the Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan. That's been also in the works so that it coordinates with all the efforts that are going on here. They're the body that determines consistency with our city comprehensive plan. They'll also be reviewing the Carroll County Bike Ped Plan as well as the ordinance we discussed tonight. Also want to let you know that your historical district commission is moving from an informal review of what's called Section 106 reviews related to the National Registered District to a more formal review. You may hear more about that later. And also, our Tree Commission, amongst the other things, it's preparing for Arbor Day and the Conference of Tree Plan, is looking for another beneficial insect release, possibly in May. It was a really surprisingly highly attended, pretty cool event, so looking to do that again. And our Main Street manager is at the national conference to learn all the new and improved things to help our downtown, and also coordinating Restaurant Week in conjunction with Wine Stroll. I want you to know this, thanks.
Ms. Swan.
Thank you very much. It's hard to believe, but we have just completed our eighth year of our red light camera program here in the city, so it's time once again for the annual review and recommendation to the council on that program. I have that data now together and should have that report to the council for your review and consideration within the next 10 days or so. Also, perhaps more importantly, I wanted to publicly acknowledge and thank Wendy McNulty, who's with us tonight. She provided some really super chili for the staff during the recent snow event. This is by no means the first time that she's done that for us. She always keeps us in mind for figuring when the weather's bad. And I'm sure I speak for many on my staff in thanking her for her efforts on our behalf. That's all I have for tonight.
I'm excited to share that following tonight's meeting, this land is about to be a downright a plug, but I think we actually have the purchase agreement and ATM lease for, with BB and T, ready for the mayor's signature at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. So I want to take a few moments just to thank Alyssa. She's been my partner in trying to work through all those details, and it's taken a little longer than we thought, but we've ended up in a good place. Also, I wanted to share that earlier today, the staff met with Gant Burnett, our project architect, to go through the latest iteration of the floor plans. They'll be going back and making some edits. I hope to have something to share with you all in the very near future. I think that concludes staff's reports, unless there's any questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nothing to say.
I'm sorry.
All right. We are on to the part of the meeting for citizen comments. If you wish to be heard, please raise your hand and identify yourself and with your address for the clerk to record. Anybody wish to be heard this evening? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Miss Henline, 414 Baldwin Park Drive, Westminster, Maryland. I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention, in case you didn't know, I had a friend who was at a yoga studio in Westminster on March 16th. It was burglarized while the class was going on. Someone came in and stole money from the studio. I think that everyone should be aware, that's concerning. There's, I didn't know if the officer was going to speak about it, but I just want to bring that to everyone's attention.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard? Yes, sir.
Jack Tevis, 415 Castle Close, Westminster. Sorry, I didn't make the beginning of the meeting when Bonnie had a chance to speak. I wanted to thank Barbara Matthews and Chief Spalding. They met with some volunteers at the Boys and Girls Club. Once the Boys and Girls Club opens on April 9th, and with Bonnie's growth plan of having perhaps up to 600 kids in that facility once the gym is built, that's a lot of people coming on Main Street at 6:00 in the afternoon during school year. So we needed some help from the city, just and from particularly Chief Spalding, Ms. Matthews, to sort of sort out how that might work. It's a wonderful thing for economic development for our town to have that number of people coming on Main Street at the end of each weekday. But it also may interfere with some of our business neighbors in terms of parking and logistics of how to move that number of kids out of the building and into cars. So I think we have a pretty good plan. Hope, we want to be a benefit to Main Street and not a nuisance, especially to our business neighbors who, some are going to benefit, but some, you know, we don't want to interfere with their clients and their customers. I missed the part about Bonnie asking for money, but I just wonder whether you're able to do that or not. I know it's a tough budget year.
Really?
Tough budget times. But boy, what a, what a ball of fire. She is our partner in crime, Erin Bishop. And as a local citizen who lives in Westminster, I think it's one of the, you know, it may be one of the finest examples around of a completely grassroots effort, community effort, to deal with Main Street issues that are going across all of our country, Main Street issues, drugs, that sort of thing. But what a wonderful community grassroots effort to sort of deal with Main Street issues that every community faces with youth. Bonnie may not have said it, but Boys and Girls Club has kids from families like yours and mine, where parents work really hard at being parents. But they also have 10 homeless kids, and they've got everything in between. The diversity is really amazing, and it's one of the benefits of the Boys and Girls Club, that diversity that is going to come to downtown Westminster. So whether there can be support or not, boy, I think we're all beneficiaries of the leadership of Bonnie and Erin. They, I don't know if they're one in a million, but they're certainly one in 10,000 in terms of the kind of leadership they have brought to this organization for acting with the... As a citizen, I'm just so gratified to be able, as a volunteer, and my wife is very involved, to be able to help with something, the help of an organization that is going to help us with some of those Main Street issues and some of those issues facing some of our youth who otherwise might get lost during those latchkey times of 3:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon. So we're so blessed that she has come to us six years ago and really created a wonderful organization that is going to benefit our community and save some kids over the year, save some kids. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard? All right, where's your...